Good evening. It is now 7:00 PM on August the 18th and the Bel Air Town Hall Meeting is now in session. I'm going to call a roll. Commissioner Rutledge?
Here.
Commissioner Chismar?
Here.
Commissioner Taylor?
Here.
And Commissioner Chance did let us know she would not be here this evening. So if you will all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the agenda be approved.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion of this evening's agenda? Any changes? All right, Mr. Krantz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is for the vote to approve this evening's agenda, Bel Air Board of Town Commissioners Town Hall Meeting on August 18th, 2025. Commissioner Rutledge?
Aye.
Commissioner Chismar?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
And Chair Edding?
Aye.
Tonight's agenda is approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the approval of the minutes. May I have a motion?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair. I move that the minutes of the Board of Commissioners' meetings held on July 15th, 2025, and July 21st, 2025, be approved as submitted, including minutes for the following meetings. July 15th, 2025, Commissioners' Work Session Open Meeting, July 15th, 2025, Commissioners' Work Session Closed Meeting, and July 21st, 2025, Commissioners' Town Hall Meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Chismar. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Rutledge. Any discussion of the minutes? All right, Mr. Krantz?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for approval of the July 15th and July 21st minutes. Commissioner Rutledge?
Aye.
Commissioner Chismar?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
And Chair Edding?
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, public hearings. Our first public hearing this evening is Ordinance 843-25, the Verizon Cable Franchise Agreement Renewal. Mr. Krantz, are you going to present on this, or?
Yes.
All right.
Let me get to the right page. I have my notes. So this particular ordinance has been a long time in coming and uh, it's, this is the final public hearing this evening for the Verizon Cable Franchise Agreement. Just in a brief summary, the Bel Air Town Hall, uh, excuse me, the Bel Air Code, Chapter A 50, which is a television cable franchise, Article II, the Verizon Franchise Agreement, was last enacted by the Board of Commissioners back in October 6th of 2020- 2008, and it became effective on October 27th, 2008, by Ordinance 71408, and that was for a term of 15 years, expiring October 27th, 2023. So the Town of Bel Air and Verizon Maryland have mutually agreed to extend the terms of that existing cable franchise agreement until the new cable franchise agreement became effective. And for the last year or so, the town has been slowly, you know, yet uh, yet on good terms with Verizon, coming to an agreement. So the agreement that you have in front of you and the agreement that's posted online with this ordinance on our legislation website page is the final agreement between the town and Verizon. Just a couple of quick issues. Uh, Verizon has applied for a new five-year, non-exclusive franchise for the operation of their cable communication system within the corporate municipal limits of the town. And that's obviously very different from the 15 years and it's just as indicative of what's happening with the cable TV industry as it's slowly transitioning to streaming. So the term is significantly shorter and Verizon also has a, a one-year clause to, to cancel should they want to end their cable subscription services. So we'll see what happens in the future, but the town has worked diligently with Verizon and we've also ensured that the town has been able to get as much as the county has in terms of their cable franchise agreement with Verizon as well. So our agreements are pretty much in alignment and the county is suffering the same situation as we are with shorter terms and a dwindling need for cable television services. So the one section that's still identical is the payment section, which is the franchisee shall pay to the town 3% of annual gross revenue. So that is still exactly the same, although with the number of subscribers, that revenue stream is, is diminishing as well, too. So with those comments, I'd be happy to take any questions. Otherwise, staff does recommend that Ordinance 843-25 be approved by the Board of Town Commissioners this evening at the unfinished business portion of the agenda.
Well, this is the public hearing for this piece of legislation. So if there's any member of the public here this evening that wishes to comment just on the Verizon Cable Franchise Agreement Renewal, now is your time to speak. All right, seeing none, we have opened the public hearing at 7:06 and closed it at 7:06 as well. And we will move on to our next public hearing. And this is actually our, yeah, this is our third public hearing on this, this piece. All right. The next public hearing is Ordinance 844-25, Amending the Town Code, Chapter 50, Finance and Taxation, Article I, Financial Matters, Section 50-3, Assessments for Services and Improvements and Abatement of Nuisances. And Ms. Thompson?
I know the oddball every so often. Um, so the recent events have precipitated either the filing of actions in the Hartford County Courts or threats to file actions in the Hartford County Courts for several issues, including but not limited to violations of the Development Regulations, property conditions, which have been declared by the Department of Public Works a public nuisance, and/or collection of sums rightfully owed to the Town of Bel Air through the Department of Finance. A review of the Town Code reveals inconsistencies as well as a lack of consistent statutory basis for the recoupment of sums expended by the town to protect its rights and maintain and/or remediate or abate the abatement of zoning violations or public nuisances. The Board of Town Commissioners, Town Staff, Town Council are responsible for protecting the town's rights and maintaining fiscal responsibility to the taxpayers of the town. Maryland law permits recoupment of litigation expenses through legislative enact- enactments. The Town Code should provide a uniform statutory basis, basis for recoupment of costs and expenses in the event litigation is necessary regardless of which portion of the code is being enforced and if the town is successful. It is recommended that Ordinance 84425, amending Section 50-3 of the Town Code, be received by the Board of Town Commissioners.
We've actually already received it.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I know we usually do that. We've already received it and this is the public hearing. So if there's any member of the public here that wishes to comment on this particular piece of legislation only, uh, amending the Town Code to allow the town to collect its costs in the event that there is litigation and that the town does prevail, um, now is your time to step to the podium and have your say. All right, so at 7:08, we have opened and closed the public hearing on Ordinance 844-25. And our last public hearing for today is Ordinance 845-25, Amending the Town Code, Chapter 165, the Comprehensive Plan and Development Regulations, Part II, Zoning, Article 10, Accessory and Temporary Uses, B Residential Districts. Mr. Small, you're going to, uh, where is that going to be, Commissioner Taylor?
Tell you what, I'll tee it up by saying I brought this piece of legislation to my colleagues because I was, uh, in, approached by a constituent who currently cannot build a shed in his backyard because he sits on a corner lot where his backyard is treated as a second front yard. This would ameliorate that. For the technical details, Director Small.
Okay, the, um, yeah, the restriction to accessory structures creates a burden on the utilization of rear yard property. Uh, when the front yard restriction is applied to those who may desire to place storage sheds or other utility structures behind their homes. Uh, because the town, uh, board recently relaxed the six-foot fence requirement in the rear yard in the same fashion, it makes sense that the, uh, sheds be relaxed in a similar fashion. Um, the amendment addresses allowance for sheds only, uh, structures under, uh, which are structures under 200 square feet. Uh, the existing limitation on front yard placement will still apply to larger structures, uh, such as detached garages or accessory dwelling units. So the staff recommends Ordinance 845-25 be approved by the town board.
Thank you, Mr. Small. So this is the public hearing for Ordinance 845-25. So if anyone wishes to make a comment on this particular section of legislation regarding sheds and, um, corner lots and our changes, now's the opportunity for you to step forward and have your say. All right, so we have opened and closed that public hearing at 7:10 as well. Moving on to unfinished business, first we have Ordinance 843-25, the Verizon Cable Franchise Agreement Renewal. May I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that Ordinance Number 843-25, amending the Code of the Town of Bel Air, Chapter A 500, Cable Television Franchises, Article II, Verizon Franchise Agreement, Section A 500-2, Franchise Granted, be approved by the Board of Town Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Rutledge. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion of this? I know we've had several public hearings and a number of discussions about the declining revenue stream that, uh, we are suffering, but it's a, it's the same deal that the county got and I think, uh, thanks to, um, Ms. Thompson for her hard work and to Mr. Krantz as well, that we now finally have an agreement that I, I think is the best we can do. Anyone have any questions? All right, Mr. Krantz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the vote on Ordinance 843-25, Commissioner Rutledge?
Aye.
Commissioner Chismar?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
And Chair Edding?
Aye.
The ordinance is approved. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is Ordinance 844-25, Amending the Town Code, Chapter 50, Finance and Taxation, Article I, Financial Matters, Section 50-3, Assessments for Services and Improvements and Abatement of Nuisances. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that Ordinance Number 844-25, amending Chapter 50, Section 3, be approved by the Bel Air Board of Town Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Chismar. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Rutledge. Uh, any questions on this piece of legislation? I know we've discussed it a number of times. All right, Mr. Krantz?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the vote on Ordinance 844-25. Commissioner Rutledge?
Aye.
Commissioner Chismar?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
And Chair Edding?
Aye.
The ordinance is approved. Thank you.
All right. Next on our unfinished business is Ordinance 845-25, amending the Town Code, Chapter 165, Comprehensive Plan and Development Regulations, Part II, Zoning, Article 10, Accessory and Temporary Uses, B Residential Districts. May I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that Ordinance Number 845-25, revising Town Code, Chapter 165, Article 10, Section 68, accessory uses be approved by the Bel Air Board of Town Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Chismar. Any further discussion of this? All right, well, good luck to the gentleman with his shed.
I think he'll be very happy.
It's tough to not have any space to put a shed. You really, everybody needs one. All right, um, Mr. Krantz, we're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the vote on Ordinance 845-25. Commissioner Rutledge?
Aye.
Commissioner Chismar?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
And Chair Edding?
Aye.
The ordinance is approved. Thank you.
All right, under new business, we have Ordinance 846-25, amending Articles 714 and Attachment 1 of the Development Regulations in Chapter 165 of the Town of Bel Air Code to establish a use category and performance standards for short-term rentals and to revise the definitions of short-term rental and accessory dwelling unit. May I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that Ordinance Number 846-25, revising Town Code, Section 165-53G, Performance Standards, Section 165-104, Definitions, and Table 3-5 of the Permitted Use Tables, be received by the Bel Air Board of Town Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Rutledge. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Mr. Small?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Town of Bel Air currently prohibits short-term rentals, rentals, uh, commonly referred to as STRs by not referencing the use as permitted in the Development Regulations. Town Code does not allow a new use to be approved if it is not found within the Part II, Chapter 165, and cannot be reasonably included and under another definition. STRs are typically private dwellings provided for rental up to four weeks where owners and potential renters are aided by connections provided through the internet applications. The, uh, Planning Commission and Economic and Community Development Commission was consulted, consulted on the proposed change to the code and a copy of their comments are provided. The town board reviewed comments and determined that the appropriate location for STR use would be best located in business districts and with, uh, within the town and excluded from residential districts. Provision of STRs requires amendment to the performance standards, uh, the definitions section, and the per- permitted use tables included under Chapter 165 of the Town Code. Under the permitted use tables, uh, STRs would be permitted in the B1, B2, B2A, B3, B3A, and M1 districts. Uh, it is recommended, Ordinance 846-25, amending the code to permit short-term rentals within business districts in the town be received by the Bel Air Board of Town Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Small. Any questions for Mr. Small or discussion of the, I know we've worked through this in a couple of work sessions and I think we have a, a start. Let's put it that way.
Yes, Madam Chair, if I could just, you know, um, I strongly support this bill. It started off, you know, on me trying to gain support and sound out support for allowing STRs both in residential and the districts, um, business districts. And for those who haven't been following our pretty extensive discussions of this over the last two or even maybe possibly three months now, um, and really the work started in earnest on this back in, you know, the beginning of the year from my perspective, that both, um, both the Planning Commission, you know, um, and Economic Development, both, um, supported initially with different, um, different applications in, in all districts. And, and we worked through that. We've discussed it. We've had a lot of, uh, discussion among the commissioners and it was, you know, clear through our work sessions that, um, the support wasn't there to be able to get a vote passed on the, to support the residential. And so, um, I think, you know, that it's definitely going to be a great benefit to the town, um, to roll this out with the specific restrictions that we have placed on it um, in the business districts and would appreciate, um, the support for it and, uh, it, I, a much, a step in the right direction from my perspective, from a, from a complete prohibition in the Town of Bel Air. And, um, I'm optimistic that, uh, it'll, it'll, it'll go well and it's going to serve an important purpose in, in a lot of areas in the Town of Bel Air. So that's why, uh, I, I appreciate, um, the opportunity to make this motion and to be able to move forward on this. Thank you.
And I certainly appreciate all the hard work that went into this, uh, both from you and from Mr. Small and the entire board participating in the discussion. So we should, could hammer out something that we could all live with, I think. Anyone have any further questions or comments?
No, I, I just think that the, the business district is the appropriate place for STRs and I do hope that they succeed. Because we can use some resi-, you know, some, some rental places for people coming into business for day or day, you know, at a time. And, you know, in the long run, still hoping that we can attract a, uh, an official hotel or boutique hotel. That would, to me, that would be the ultimate solution, but I hope this gets us started.
To the, to that point, Commissioner Chismar, uh, I do have a, a great deal of optimism for this in that if this can prove as a test case the market desire for short-term rental options in the Town of Bel Air, short-term stays, rather, in the same way that the success of a Sprouts or a Wegman has brought other competitors to Bel Air, I think this may be a strong arrow in our quiver for attracting a boutique hotel to, to demonstrably show that the market for short-term stays is there. And so I agree with you in the wisdom of including this, uh, in the business districts. Um, I also want to thank residents, uh, from the town who've invited me into their homes to sort of show me from the residential aspect what it would look like. Um, there was a lot of good debate back and forth on this issue. Um, I think that there are merits both to only allowing them in the business districts and also opening them up to the residential. But ultimately, it came down to me, and you know, this is the first vote, this is not the final vote, but what ultimately came down from my perspective on restricting this to the business districts was the view from folks who, in town who said that they wanted to live in residential districts and wanted to keep it that way, wanted the use to be residential. I think that we've got people who, if given the opportunity, could really run quite, uh, a, quite a good operation here in town. You know, this is uh, not because I feel that there would be in any way problems, um, with, with either those individuals or anybody else, rather because when I knocked on doors two years ago now and when I took public comment and, and heard from folks uh, these past couple of months, the thought, the prevailing thought was that we oughta, we oughta at the very least, see how it goes in business first, but that they just didn't want to open that up in their residential districts. And when it comes to planning from the perspective of the board, we have to plan for the whole town. You know, we can't spot zone. We can't allow it in small carve-outs and, and not in others. When we view residential districts, we have to look at the whole of the district. And so I know that it can be a, a difficult decision to swallow, but I really want to finish my comments on this by thanking Commissioner Rutledge for all of the work that he put into this, all of the research that he put into this, um, and all of the good faith effort that he put into this with reaching out to broad swaths of the community, both those who, the folks who favored it in business, folks who favored it in residential, and there were some folks who didn't favor it in either, uh, you know, but ultimately we came upon what I think the best and smartest compromise for the, for the future of the town will be. And I'm looking forward to seeing how this progresses in the next couple of years because I, I think it really could be a strong, um, indicator for potential growth to, uh, something like a boutique hotel.
All right. And now it will be the opportunity for anyone that wishes to comment on this legislation to step to the podium and have your three minutes. And if you could just state your name and address for the record.
Of course. Uh, good evening all. My name is Rob Kiesling. I live at 11 East Howard Street and I am here to speak on this issue. And I want to start with some statistics. And these come from Airbnb, which is one of the most popular, if not, not the most popular platform for short-term rentals and one that I'm sure most of you are, are familiar with. Average number of bookings for each Airbnb on an annual basis, 25. Average length of stay, 4.5 days. Average number of guests per booking, 3.5. These aren't rowdy moms. These are families that are coming to our town. Percentage of bookings that receive an unfavorable rating, less than 1%. Overall average rating is 4.75 stars out of 5. Average annual income per host, $13,000, $13,800. And while that won't put your child through Harvard, that's a nice chunk of change for a home-based business. Money that can be used, among other things, to pay bills or to invest back into the local community. Now let's look at some facts as they relate to other jurisdictions in the region that support short-term rentals in residential areas. And this data also comes courtesy of Airbnb. Montgomery County requires licensing and has restrictions on rental duration and number of guests. Anarundel County requires registration and a payment of an occupancy tax. PG County requires rental property to be the host's primary residence and a minimum liability coverage. And speaking of other jurisdictions, when I attended the working session in May, it was mentioned that Ocean City was considering looking at, uh, putting restrictions on short, short-term rentals. And although in relation to Bel Air, Ocean City is not a, uh, a really good comparison, it's kind of apples to oranges. I followed the debate on that issue and it was just a couple of weeks ago that the initiative went to referendum and it was rejected by the voters. Primary reason cited, according to WBAL News, the ordinance would have restricted property rights. What I've expressed here is my opinion and mine alone, but two points about my opinion. First, it is based on facts, data, and actual experience. I doubt that the opposition that you hear out on, on social media or elsewhere can say the same. Second, while I can only speak for myself, I assure you, there are many folks who share my opinion. I encounter them in my neighborhood and at business networking events in town. And don't forget, originally, your own economic development committee supported it. And while we may not be that vocal, we are out here. In closing, I think it's about time that Bel Air stopped leaving money and hospitality on the table. Stop driving the visitors to our town for family events, holidays, business meetings, you know, those people out to the interstate for lodging. Supporting short-term, and supporting short-term rentals in only the business zoning areas is not the answer. Please identify for me any business property owner in town that could or would have a location suitable to stand up a short-term rental. I don't think you'll find very many, if any. So I encourage all of you to do the right thing and support short, short-term rentals in all zoning areas so that we can keep the welcome slogan on the sign at the Flatiron. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wish to speak? All right, in that case, we will. Uh, does anyone have any more comments or questions? All right, Mr. Krantz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is for the vote to receive Ordinance 846-25. Commissioner Rutledge?
Aye.
Commissioner Chismar?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
And Chair Edding?
Aye.
The ordinance is received and a public hearing is going to be scheduled for September 15th at the next Town Hall Meeting, uh, at the second Town Hall Meeting in September on the 15th at 7:00 PM here at Town Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Krantz. That's the only thing I was going to add, just so everyone is aware that this is not the final vote and there will be another public hearing scheduled on September 15th. All right, next up is the purchase of patrol vehicles by the Bel Air Police Department. May I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I moved that the bid from Apple Ford Lincoln Incorporated for the purchase of four, 2025, four AWD SUV police interceptors in the amount of $186,076, which is $46,519 each, be accepted by the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Rutledge. And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. All right, Chief?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, apologies on this initially submitted agenda item. There's a There's a revision concerning the number of vehicles that, it's the same number, but we're going into a little bit more detail of what the replacement vehicles are. There's three replacements and one new vehicle which will be added to the fleet. So nothing has changed as far as the amount or the value or anything like that. So just giving you a heads up on that and apologies. The purchase of these vehicles will provide the Bel Air Police Department with three replacement vehicles and one new vehicle to our fleet, which follows the department's replacement schedule. The vehicles accepted are police pursuit vehicles that are all-wheel drive. The new Ford SUVs will replace car 15, which is a 2014 Mark Ford sedan with 70,000 miles. Car 21, which is a 2015 Ford sedan with 76,000 miles. Car 32 is a 2013 sedan with 86, 87,000 miles, sorry. And car, car 40, there's no replacement for that one. Again, that's a new vehicle added to supplement our, our fleet. All of the replacement vehicles are Mark patrol vehicles. The fourth Mark vehicle will be utilized to supplement the Bel Air PD fleet as the department has approached and fully staffed levels at this time. The town's procurement regulations allows for cooperative purchases, piggybacking with other public jurisdictions. A copy of the State of Maryland blanket purchase order, which is current, from this allied jurisdiction, which was awarded based on competitive bids, is attached. Apple Ford Lincoln Incorporated is the recipient of the State of Maryland contract being piggybacked from, which is the contract for the law enforcement vehicles being used in this purchase. That bid expires on February 28th, 2026. There are sufficient funds in the FY '26 budget, which was 220,000, to pay for the purchase of the four Ford police interceptors. The staff recommends that the Board of Town Commissioners approves the bid from Apple Ford Lincoln Incorporated for the purchase of the aforementioned patrol vehicles in the amount of $186,076, which is 33,924 under budget.
Thank you, Chief Moore. Glad to see it's under budget.
Thank you, commissioners.
Any questions for the chief?
I don't have a question. I just want to thank the BAPD and their friends in finance for once again putting together a very tight proposal that is fiscally responsible and puts the safety of the citizens of Bel Air first. Yet again, as far as the time that I've been on the board now for the past, you know, a little less than two years, you guys are like, you know, 500 and nothing for, for doing that. You know, they all seem to come in under budget and overperforming. So once again, I, I look forward to voting for this, for this purchase.
Thank you, sir.
The only question I had was, does this, is this the complete cost of four cars or is there additional costs later for the police equipment that needs to be put on your generic police interceptor?
That's a very good question, ma'am. And yes, there, there is an accessory package needed for all of these vehicles. We're refining and honing the price on that. We're trying to get it, get it down a little bit further. So that will be coming up in the very near future.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for the chief?
Just to reiterate, one point we discussed previously, chief, was the, you're under budget on the vehicles.
Yes, sir.
And then we have the separate, you know, accessory package. That was approved in our budget as a separate line item expenditure. So it's not like you're telling us, oh, we're saving money, but we got to buy more. No, there's separate budget money set aside for that. So I, and so I just wanted to, to, just for the public, make that crystal clear.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. That's correct.
And, and just the overall observation of, you know, how old the vehicles are and plus the mileage on it and the need for dependable response and, and, and law enforcement. You know, I think we all, we all share in that sentiment here on the commission that it's, it's the right thing to do, absolutely. And thank you again for saving so much money.
So here's, here's one more little tidbit of information. I've, I've seen it out there that, I've seen the public say, why are the police cars running all the time? They're running because they have computers running and everything else and it takes too long for, to start all that stuff up if you have to restart the car. So, and that adds, that adds hours on the, the life of these cars. So you might see a certain mileage, but in reality, there's a lot more, a lot more time on the engines.
Yeah, thank, thank you for that. Appreciate that.
So it's really a rolling computer office that they have?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, yes, ma'am.
All right. Is there anyone here from the public that wishes to make a comment on the purchase of patrol vehicles? And I see none, so. Any other comments from the board or questions? All right. Mr. Krantz, we're ready.
Thank you, ma'am chair. For, this is for the vote on the purchase of four police interceptors. Commissioner Rutledge?
Aye.
Commissioner Chismar?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
And Chair Edding?
Aye.
The contract is approved. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have the appointment to the Board of Building Appeals. May I have a motion?
All right. I'm sorry. Then we will move on to public announcements. All town of Bel Air offices will be closed on Monday, September 1st in observance, observance of Labor Day. Residents whose trash is typically picked up on Mondays will have theirs collected on Wednesday, September the 3rd. Residential trash will be picked up Tuesday, September 2nd as scheduled that week. Yard waste will not be collected on Monday and there will be no bulk trash pickup on Wednesday. Contact the Department of Public Works at 410-638-4536 with any questions prior to the holiday. The final two shows of the Music in the Park Summer Concert Series on Wednesdays, brought to you by the Bel Air Recreation Committee, will be August the 20th, featuring Dan House, and August 27th with the band Close Call. Both shows start at 6:00 PM in Shamrock Park and admission is free. Call the Bel Air Recreation Committee at 443-987-6744 for weather-related updates the day of the show. The Community Yard Sale and Flea Market hosted by the Bel Air Downtown Alliance will be Sunday, August the 24th. The flea market runs from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM in the parking lot of the Mary Westell Building at 2 South Bond Street. Anybody who wants to hold a yard sale at their property that day can contact the Downtown Alliance at 443-823-1797 or info@downtownbelair.com so it can be promoted as part of the event. More than 250 years after the American Patriot Militiamen and British Regulars clashed at the Battle of Bunker Hill in Boston, you have an opportunity to learn how the news of this early Revolutionary War battle was received in Harford County during the summer of 1775. The Historical Society of Harford County will host Revolutionary Harford, the Battle of Bunker Hill, at the Hayes House Museum in Bel Air on Sunday, August 24th. That event starts at 1:00 PM and admission is free. The Hayes House is at 324 North Kemble Avenue near Bel Air High School. The Maryland Department of Transportation is seeking public input on how state-maintained highways, including those in the Bel Air area, can be made safer for pedestrians and cyclists. Search for the Vulnerable Road User Safety Assessment for July and August 2025 online and click the Harford County tab on the GIS map. Click the option for Maryland Route 24, starting at the intersection with Baltimore Pike and Bel Air, and then follow the prompts to fill out the survey. We are still accepting applications for the fall session of the Municipal Citizens Academy, which starts on September 24th. This eight-week course, which is offered free of charge, is an opportunity for Bel Air residents to learn about how their town government works and the many services it provides. Classes will be held on Wednesdays from 6:30 PM to 9:00 PM in the Police Department Community Room. Visit the Municipal Citizens Academy page on our website to register. Contact the Town Clerk at 410-638-4550 or townclerk@belairmd.org with any questions. Bel Air's 2025 municipal election is November the 4th, 2025. Anyone interested in running for the two seats on the Board of Town Commissioners that are up for election this year has until 7:00 PM on Friday, September 19th to register. You must file in person here at Town Hall and there is a $25 filing fee. Qualified candidates must have been residents of the town of Bel Air for at least six months prior to the election and be registered to vote in Maryland. The Committee for Seniors and Citizens in Need will meet at 8:30 AM on Wednesday, August 27th, in the Bel Air Police Department Community Room. And the Board of Town Commissioners will hold a work session at 5:15 PM on Tuesday, August 26th, in Town Hall. And the next town meeting will be at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, September 2nd, also in Town Hall.
Did I miss anything? All right. Public comments. There being no members of the public here, we will go on to commissioners' comments.
Well, I just wanted to welcome back all of the directors that we look across here. We know summer's coming to an end when, you know, all the leaders, all the leaders are here and no one's pinch hitting, but everybody that spoke in your places this summer did a great job. So you should be proud of them as well. The, it, it is, I, I, I do appreciate, you know, the, the highlighting of the municipal election coming up. This is the opportunity certainly for the citizens and the voters of Bel Air to participate and for people that feel, you know, called to serve, to, to step up and throw their hat in the ring. And I'm sure I speak for all the commissioners saying that if, if anybody's out there thinking about it and wonders what life is really like as a commissioner, I'm, you know, my, I've got an open door policy. People could, you know, reach out, shoot me an email on the, the town email and, and give me your number and I'll, I'll give you a call and give you my perspective because it's all about, you know, the representative government here and it's, it's really an important thing, so crucial, that the, the more participation from voters on getting out to vote and planning on voting, because it is an off-year. We always say this about, you know, people think, oh, no, the election's next year. Well, we'll, we'll vote when the governor's on the ballot or a presidential election, but we have, we have this odd-year thing going.
We're special.
Yeah. Very special.
So you can concentrate just on the town.
Yeah, so I just.
It gives an opportunity for town residents to vote every single year.
That's it.
You just will never get tired of voting. It's a special gift.
It is.
There you go. So, but, but that's, that's all I wanted to add tonight.
And I'm sure any one of us would be happy to answer any questions, including how, how it works. How you file, campaigning, you know.
And if you want to know about how to file, there's no one better to ask than Mr. Michael Krantz sitting to our left.
He's, he knows it all. He's the man to see.
Happy, happy to take any questions.
Yes, and he's also available to answer any questions about filing and paperwork and that sort of thing. But it's a $25 filing fee, so it's within pretty much everyone's reach and it is coming up.
Yeah, I have a comment on, on something, you know, this is probably a work session thing, which we'll probably need to discuss further in the work session, but, you know, we've been getting a lot of reports lately of citizens asking about, you know, for speeding vehicle, you know, a lot of speeding incidents between, you know, this is on Broadway, Giles, Shamrock, McCormick, a lot of things going on. And, you know, Chair Edding and I were talking and she's saying, yeah, we're never going to stop it totally, but, you know, I was just thinking, is there some kind of, can we initiate some kind of program? Just think about this, about speed reduction, making our streets safer, making, you know, enhanced pedestrian safety, because, you know, as speed goes up, pedestrian safety goes down. They're directly correlated. So chief, I don't, I don't know if there's something that we can do with that, whether we can get something with the AEGIS to publish things, whether we're saying, we're going to start tar, not targeting, but maybe, you know, stopping with warnings and things, not necessarily giving out tickets and stuff, but that's just one measure. And it's how do we start making people aware of their speed and all, because it's becoming an issue and in some neighborhoods.
Rooting up a public information campaign, sort of, maybe we can put some things on our website. I know I saw the video with the bicyclists and, and that was, you know, a good reminder to people that if you're a bike on the road, you're a car. So you, you need to stop for stop signs and red lights and everything. And maybe we could do a similar thing for our stop sign and speed complaints.
I mean, we, I, I hear you, I really do, but again, I've been doing it and nothing against anybody here, I've been doing it a long time. I hear it, you know, every, every year, every, you know, every month about safety and it's always on my mind. I try to do my best to, to get the message out and I just, it just, sometimes, you know, it just, it seems, it seems like I hit a dead end with, I can't, I can't touch everybody.
Well, we know you're, we know you're out there because I've seen the officers making stops on, at the Broadway and Shamrock Road intersections. So I know we're, we're, when we get complaints, I know that you're addressing them by sending officers out there to, to help increase public awareness of, we are watching and stop for the stop sign, please.
One of the initiatives that I kicked off when I was a, a bear commander at the state police to get, because never had enough troopers out there to, to, to totally, to get the visibility or get the effect that you wanted. So we kicked off this thing called the Traffic Task Force. And that's been going ever since 2013 and the sheriff's office is, is running it now. We're a participant, participant in that. And every month, what happens is, or every week of the month, each jurisdiction gets that Traffic Task Force in their, in their respective jurisdictions. And the, the, the strategy is to saturate an area with visibility, with, with enforcement. So I think sometimes you'll see the citizens talking about, oh my gosh, there's all these police officers in town. Well, that's one of the initiatives that I kicked off way back when, because again, it's something that's always on my mind. I, I open it up to other people to come up with creative ideas. I'm getting older and I'm thinking my creativity's starting to get a little dull sometimes. So hey, any ideas that come in, I'm, I'm willing to try it and, and push it out there and, you know, let's, let's improve the safety. I think one of the issues that we could concentrate on is it's always distracted driving, people looking at their phones. Maybe we'll, maybe we'll kick off an initiative where it's, you know, cell phone safety or distracted driving awareness, something like that. So that's something that we have been toying with. Maybe, it's almost like a, it's almost like a sobriety checkpoint where you'll have a channelization like on a, a high-volume roadway like Route 24 and we'll just be searching for people on their cell phones, things like that. So, yeah, but any help or, you know, any ideas? Throw them out there.
I know we just had a meeting with.
Yes, ma'am.
With a constituent who had some concerns and had an interesting idea, which we will be talking about at a work session in, in the future, once everybody sort of has an opportunity to evaluate that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, sir.
Right. And, and it's not any dig on anybody. I'm just saying, you know, there's, that we can do some, and ticketing, I don't think is the, I don't want to ticket our citizens to death or whatever, but, you know, a stoppage with warnings, I mean, most people who are speeding are not doing it.
Right.
You know, with, with full knowledge that they're doing, you know, 35, 40, in, in a 25 type of thing and whatever. And, and they'll respond to something like that and it's, and it's just a, you know, think, that's just one of many measures. Again, I'm not in, in this area, but anything we can do to help, again, the visibility is, is a big thing and, and people out there will just respond to that.
Yep, yep, yep.
So, but, thanks.
Uh huh. Yes, sir.
So I wanted to thank Director Klein for his hard work on the Maryland American rate increases. And I, I know we'll have to sort of, we'll discuss it at a work session, I think, but to go through the information that we have, put our thinking caps on for, you know, what we want to ask and be prepared to speak to Maryland American. I'm not in favor of a tiered rate system. I don't really underst, I mean, tiered rate systems are really to reduce consumption and I'm not really sure if we have a consumption problem here in, in town. I mean, I'm sure we have, I know I personally had a consumption issue and I found out that, you know, some of my toilets needed some attention, but I knew that when I got the bill. So I'm, I'm not sure that we have a consistently, you know, big usage that we need to try to reduce. So I'm, I'm curious to hear what their justifications, or I'm going to read everything that they filed at the Public Service Commission and the other information that you provided. And, you know, we can put our heads together and try to figure out what, what they're doing and what the reason is behind it.
I just, I just wanted to share my dealings with it in the past with you all, because I know it's a tenuous process. It's a, it's a straightforward process that they delegate and I just wanted to make sure everybody was on, understood what we were about to get into. So hopefully it helps. Please let me know if you have any questions. But I, you know, it's pretty detailed on how it all comes together, you know.
And I, I know the power lies with the Public Service Commission who will be approving or, or not their rates, but it's, it behooves us to figure out what, why they're doing it and what it's going to cost our residents. How's it going to affect the family of, you know, four or five or six that may have a bill that is, you know, 4,000 gallons and up usage versus the, you know, one person living in an apartment who is probably going to have under 2,000 gallons usage. So I want to, want to see how that pans out.
The thing that blew me away was the fact that they, they put out a calendar once every week and there's over 100 usually new cases that come up each week. So there's thousands of cases that go before the commission a year. So they're, they're all like together, they're like a family, they're like an office, actually. They all know each other, you know, they all laugh and giggle in between the meetings and stuff. know each other, you know, they all laugh and giggle in between the meetings and stuff. So it's kind of a strange whole procedure actually, anyway.
Yes, it is.
I agree.
All right, anyone have anything else?
Just that I share your zeal for opposing tiered systems and that I am gravely concerned about the potentially impending greenlighting of them. The Public Service Commission, in this humble Commissioner's opinion, is all too often a rubber stamp. And I just have concern about, this is part of a broader rising cost of living problem that is squeezing families and businesses and retirees out of Maryland and no matter what we in, in my, again, humble opinion, well-governed places like Bel Air and Harford County can do about it, there's only so much that we can do to defend against the onslaught from the state. And so my, my support is with you Mayor Edding as, as we, you know, are the David to their Goliath, and I will be with you to the end in that one.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I've been reading through some of that and it's not necessarily the tiered system that's got my eye, it's a 50% increase is what they're asking for. Now, they said they haven't had a rate increase since 2019, but a 50% increase since 2019, I really want to understand where that 50% additional funds is going.
In the information I provided you all, the one thing that really caught my eye was the, the big discrepancy between how much the town of Bel Air pays compared to the town of Severn or whatever is paying, there was a, a great difference in the amount that they pay for water.
Yes, I noticed that too, and they have unlimited, they just get a flat rate.
Right.
And it's not by usage, but anyway, but they may just, I don't know how big that town is, you know, so, but anyway.
Good questions to have for when we talk to Maryland American.
But that 50% increase seems pretty steep.
Well, it was 50% that was going to be paid by the 4,000 and up users, the users...
No, they're asking for a 2.8 million increase in gross revenue from the 6 million that they had, they're getting now. So when you look at that, it's like, I think it's 47% or something like that.
Right, but they were going to, the people that used more water were going to pay higher rates, more than that, so, you know, those would be subsidizing the folks that used 2,000 and under and I, I'm looking for the justification for that.
Correct, I mean, there's two.
A gallon, the cost of a gallon, there's the cost of a gallon, so why, you know, so often bulk users get a cheaper rate.
Right, but it's, yeah, so, okay.
Well, we'll all put our thinking caps on and have a list of questions so that we can get some answers later. But I, I realize we are, yeah, we are going to be swimming uphill on that one, but we'll still try. All right, anyone have anything else? All right, in that case.
I have a motion to adjourn.
There you go, do we have a second?
Second?
All right, now on favor?
Aye.